Open up, uh, meeting session. It time is, uh, not nine thirty-four. So, uh, please silence and shut off your cell phones. Uh, if you'll all join me in the pledge. Commissioner Albersen, give us the pleasure of leading this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, whose liberty and justice for all.
So. Commissioner Albersen, I know you've done a bunch of work on this and stuff. And you've kind of pledged some favors. And I know, Mr. Schulberg, you just got off the phone call with Zale. Um, maybe you guys, whichever one of you want to go first, um, the floor is yours.
I, I just thought it would be nice to go through there's. It's with the American Rescue Plan as.
Yes.
Um, wrote underneath titles, uh, different titles. And I would just like to go through the whole thing quickly and apply, I guess wouldn't be the word for grants under cer- or money under certain titles. And so, um, that's okay with you?
Sure, yeah, Title One, uh, agriculture, nutrition, and forestry.
So, under Title One, um, under the food supply chain, as you guys know, um, Lake County is in a tight spot as far as when, if anything major happened, um, we'd be in deep trouble as far as getting our food supply chain built. Um, one of the thoughts that I had for the food supply chain would be, um, how could we make sure that our county would be able to get food? If a major problem happened. When this COVID thing happened, as you remember, one of my biggest concerns to Congressman Walton was our food supply. Yeah, especially in the winter time when, you know, you don't have fruits and vegetables and gardens going and that sort of thing. And so, Melody brought up a good, um, point to me that I never thought of this morning. And that was Highway one forty from Winemucca to, um, Lakeview is closed to truck traffic for a certain length because of the S-curves and A-L. And if we could open that to truck traffic, which we've been, and then Commissioner Winters has been working on for years, um, is if we could open that to truck traffic, that would give us one more avenue to have food to work.
We can from our land, yeah.
And so, I don't have a specific number on that. Um, but my thought would be, you know, I think that, if I remember right, it was like a forty million dollar project.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't, can't get it if you don't ask. Um, but that would be my thought on that one would be, um, that's how we can improve our supply line for, um.
You guys, uh, we went, we went straight to the weeds. Can we, can we just give a quick summary of what, why we're here and what we're doing and what we're trying to achieve?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Right, if you don't mind, let me just read a, a quick thing here. So just an over, overdeal, uh, Representative Owens sent out a request to all of us, for projects that have to do with the American Rescue Plan Act twenty twenty-one. And, uh, what we're trying to do is identify projects for Lake County that will move forward, that will be for consideration for, uh, funding through the CARES Act. And it says, "The American Rescue Plan Act twenty twenty-one creates new coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds to keep first responders, frontline health workers, teachers, and other providers of vital services safely on the job as states, local governments, tribes, and territories roll out vaccines and fight to rebuild mainstream economies." Funds are available until December thirty-one of twenty twenty-four. Now that legislation has been cleared by Congress, all matters of execution, including allocations of funding, regulations, prescribing eligible uses of payments, and resolving matters of statutory ambiguity will be determined by the guidance and regulations pro, promulgated by the Secretary of Treasury, which will be determinative. So, uh, I think what they've given us, what, eleven titles, uh, due to consider? And first one is Title One, which Commissioner Albersen is talking about, which includes, uh, food supply chain.
Mm-hmm.
Does that help you kind of a little bit? Give us, give us a summary of what we're.
Yeah, just so that the public kind of has a better understanding of why we're here. To really provide, you know, to, to put forward some asks and, uh, some projects that we might have some potential for.
Because the state has a chunk of money to go down to the counties for.
Correct.
Yeah.
Some broad.
The state has seven hundred and eighty million dollars in new urgent investments to revitalize Oregon's economy and provide workers and families the resources they need to recover from the impact of the pandemic. So, we're brainstorming. We needed to have this emergency session to have this discussion with the three of us so that we can put our best foot forward.
Because they need to have this, they need to have our proposals, uh, by the end of the day.
Correct.
And they're looking for two or three proposals from each county?
Yeah, kind of our top three.
We're not, we're not limited.
Okay.
We're not limited on how many we request, but by the end of today, hopefully, we kind of identify what our, at least our top three are.
Okay.
We can put in as many as we want, but I, and we kind of leave it in their hands to decide which ones that, uh, are top priority. So I would probably.
But a forty million dollar project out of seven hundred and eighty million dollars, it might be, I don't know, I don't know how they would.
Well, my question was, I was gonna.
Doesn't mean they have to pay for all of them either.
Correct, absolutely. I mean, we could, uh, Lake County's, uh, match on some of these things with SCO Act. You know, it isn't always, you know, as, as high as other counties can afford. Um, but, you know, as SCO Act, um, do, do you guys, either of you remember where SCO Act is at with any kind of future, future outlook for one four, one forty, uh, going east?
Uh, there's nothing.
They have nothing on the table for even consideration. Uh, okay. I always thought that they just kind of had it in the back of their head, but it was.
Well, I think it's in the back of their head, but it's such a big project.
Okay.
And also, real quickly, and I didn't mean to get in the weeds, but on the food supply chain, Food Share, that was my thing. It was on, I was just on the phone, but, um, they operate both down here and up north. Um, they, they need about fifty grand just to complete their building where they store the food. And then they operate on about twenty grand on each end a year for to bring food in.
Do they have?
Most of their food's donated.
Okay. But the, I mean, we would, for a funding stream, though, they can afford that twenty grand per year, basically, to keep them going and everything.
It's all donated.
It's all donated and everything, okay, so basically.
Donated or grants, Ronnie, um, got a FEMA grant for them at one time. And so, if we can help out on the food, food supply on that end, would be great.
So, okay. Okay. And so about fifty grand for fixing that facility, basically, is kind of what they're looking at, though.
They could probably do it for less.
Yeah, and we don't necessarily have to cover the entire cost or something like that, but, okay.
I would, I would make the total for like sixty grand for the Food Share.
You know, back in the day, I remember George Carlin told me a story that, um, way back in the day that, uh, in the seventies and the sixties, we had grain supplies, Lake County, seven years' worth. That was kind of a goal, that they would have seven years' worth of grain on hand in Lake County if there was food shortage or something like that. They would actually store that up in the caves of Fort Rock. It was way back, but, um, and America actually had the habit of keeping grain supplies on hand, um, for seven years at a time, and that's kind of where that came from. Today, there's less than one year's supply of grain.
So the food, the Food Share one, what might be under the International Food Aid, which is still under Title One.
Yeah.
Probably fits better there.
So do you have anything, any other ideas on Title One? I liked it.
So, under the rural healthcare, I contacted Christie, and she has not acted me about the number there, but, we can definitely qualify under that, under Title One also.
Okay.
Or the rural healthcare for Food Share?
Or no. Or see rural healthcare in the bottom of the page under Title One.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so there's, there's a dollar amount there that may become, okay. I think that's how some of these are going to be, is we just don't have numbers.
The thing is, is that by the end of the day, if we don't have those numbers, we're going to blow one in.
Right.
And so, my thought would be, you know, a couple hundred thousand under rural healthcare until we get a different number. If we don't get a number.
So the hospital's got direct allocation money out of this last stimulus bill too. I mean, I would think that there's dollars going to rural healthcare directly through their allocation. If, or is this a, there's even, you know, the state public health, the, the federal. So I, I'm curious how far into other jurisdictions we're gonna go with some of these dollars.
Yeah, because we've talked about schools too.
Right, and, and one forty's an ODOT jurisdiction. So I don't, I mean, we're, we're here to support our partners in our jurisdictions, but.
My understanding is, well, I guess, I, clarification then, are these other jurisdictions being asked the same questions? Because I've got no response from.
I don't know if it's our responsibility to dictate that.
Yeah.
And so, we have a certain amount of subjects under each title. I believe if we qualify for one, we should ask. They can separate themselves, I mean, you know, there's definitely a need there, and so.
Okay, I mean, I, I agree with that.
I agree with that, and, uh, Jack Thompson with ESD, I haven't heard back from him.
Okay.
Trying to get some things, but I've talked to Superintendent Carter on a definite need for the school.
Okay.
Uh, so I, I know a number there, but that's just one school district within Lake County.
Right.
But to, you know, follow up, which comes, you know, today, I think that's.
See, like, under Title Two, um, under workforce, it says, "Public health workers and communities across the county are key to getting virus under control. Every clinician and administrators administrates the vaccine as supported by a team of public health workers who make up, make the system work. However, um, local health and state, uh, health departments have lost twenty-five, uh, twenty-three percent of their workforce since two thousand and eight, and almost a quarter of the health department staff are currently eligible for retirement. This bill provides seven point six billion to bolster the public health workforce and COVID-nineteen response." And so, we're asked, I mean, there's a plethora of different subjects. And if, you know, if they can get money to hire somebody else or whatever, like, under that. And so, I'm trying not to get us in the weeds, but on the other hand, they're asking for our needs, and if we don't provide what we need.
That works.
And, and so, I don't want to do their job. I mean, I, I don't.
If, if they're asking you guys for that information and they, they see that, they can probably weed that out, saying, oh, this is covered over here because we've already asked the school district this, we've asked the hospitals this, we've asked. Well, I think they, uh, speeches throw it all in there together, they can weed it out, and they probably will. Would be my guess, just from listening to you guys talk.
Maybe they'll see a pattern.
But it's on the list. Yeah. It's on the list, answer it, and then they can, they can farm it up from there.
Okay, I misunderstood the governor's request, thinking it was more like economic development ideas for counties.
Well, th- those are in here too.
Right, but, and I thought that was the, the seven hundred and eighty million was more geared to that title and those dollars than, than everything. But I agree, make your list extensive, and then they can sort it out.
Shoot for the moon and settle for the mountains, I mean, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's how I'm looking at it. I mean, because if we don't put it in there, we're going to get zero.
I think we're all looking at it that way.
There's always that risk of zero, because we don't know if Mr. Carter's got the same.
We're obviously not going to get everything, and we might not get much, but there are eleven titles, and within those titles, there are several categories.
Right.
And so, money is there, and we can find the right niche for Lake County. Um, these are opportunities that we at least need to track.
So, maybe this would be a, a good approach for us to take then. Do you guys have some things that you think would be worth pursuing? Or just a kind of thing, county interest? I wrote down my top three as of right now. I anticipated them maybe to change once we had some conversation today.
So are we getting the top three from our owner's office? Or are we just?
I didn't see a top three.
Uh, no, that's just my, that's, that's my verbiage.
Well, it's just come up several times today, and so I'm just trying to figure this out.
I know, I, that was, that was just me saying top three, I.
I think, I think we do what we're doing, let's go through the titles. We started at Title One, and we've got a ways to go here, but, uh, well, we don't, we don't necessarily match in every single title. But it'd be good to hear what the three of us have in mind.
Well, you know, I wrote down railroad, um, because we were going out for that two point nine million dollar loan. And, uh, whatever dollars we can replace some of those loan dollars with would be a good thing. I wrote down broadband.
Was that under your transportation?
Uh.
What title was that?
I didn't put it under the titles yet. I was looking for a way to, to weave that in, and I thought it would maybe work under transportation. I also wrote down broadband, um, Mary, you were working on that, and I wrote down, uh.
But those are all in here, but.
Yes, they are.
What, what I'm saying is, is.
I just wrote down some roads and stuffs. And we can definitely go, go and do that, and just go down each title. Um, I anticipated my little list to challenge as we went through it. Uh, so where are we now? We're kind of in, are we in Title Two now? Or are we still?
I'm, I'm done with Title, I don't know somebody else that's.
No, I didn't have anything, so I have good, good ideas, though.
Title Two, Commissioner Schulberg, the K through twelve schools.
Yeah, so I talked to Superintendent Carter, um, with the purchase of the, uh, daycare center slash head. Uh, I don't know if we call it Head Start, but the Sunshine Center, um, by the park there, Dome Park. Uh, one of the problems there is ADA accessibility, and there's a bill there that's, uh, going to be in need of, uh, getting that place up to stuff for ADA. And so, sixty thousand was an ask there that would help get that project, you know, a much better place that we should be asking for. I'd like to think that there's more K through twelve, but I've had two phone calls to Mr. Thompson with ESD. Just haven't, uh, been able to connect with him.
Because we know that, uh, both Lakeview and Paisley schools, the buildings are.
Yeah, but, uh, if you read, um, uh, it, it does say a hundred and twenty-five billion for, uh, K through twelve. And it talks about, um, Elementary and Secondary School Education Relief Fund. That's why we need to probably talk to Mr. Thompson. But I think we can have a good number by, maybe by this afternoon of what we can put in there. Talks about kids' social and emotional needs. I don't think it talks about capital improvement.
Yeah, but it does talk about safety protocols to safely reopen. And if we can improve our buildings to spread them out more, like the junior high school and that, I think that would qualify, or we could spread them out, is my thought under that, but I might have it washed up.
Well, it's certainly, uh, worth the ask. Let me follow up on that, I'll, I'll definitely, uh, do a follow-up on that, and I think we can come up with a better answer later. Keep moving.
What's going on with our TCC deal? How much were they providing us last year before the COVID thing?
In person? In person?
Yeah.
We didn't give them last year.
No, but what were, what were they providing? Because we've lost all that, virtually. They were providing people to, and, uh.
Oh, Friday before. They had a person at the front desk, and then they had, like, a person to help with classwork, and they helped facilitate. They had a computer lab, um.
And that all went away.
Well, I think everything's still just mothballed, um, and hopefully they'll, they're working on getting. I know Mr. Carter's working on providing staffing, and I think they're working on some of their MOU.
The MOU's signed, uh, planned for next fall.
And so how mu- how many people did they staff there? I guess, what I'm getting at.
The school is providing a teacher.
Right, so under the higher ed, would they qualify under that?
I bet they would.
And so, what are you looking at, a hundred grand, probably, by type of benefits go, right?
Yep. Sure would hurt.
Um, the childcare and Head Start, that's kind of what we were talking about previously. Um, I'm wondering if we could put the sixty thousand requests under that? You think, Mary?
Yeah, that would fit too. Yep. That would certainly help. Yeah, that's very specific, I guess, I guess, a little more specific.
Uh, I didn't have anything else in Title Two except down on the library. And I left a message with Amy, but I already sent it to email, but I've never had a response.
Thing is, this isn't really for capital improvements.
No.
It's mainly for just allowing libraries to reopen in emergency relief to, for them to implement.
It does have accessible Wi-Fi, though.
Yeah, but we've got Wi-Fi at both libraries.
So they have changed their operation hours, though, right? Um, because of the PERS increase in the community support. That's, and there's some staffing changes, so maybe they could work out having full-time hours again.
Yeah, that was mainly because of the rent, that they had to cut back on their hours, so.
Oh, it wasn't PERS.
Well, PERS, PERS increase, of course, does affect them and is one of the reasons why they don't have additional funding to, um, meet the requirements of the raise in rent.
Oh.
And so, it's, I mean, if rent were to stay where it was, I think they probably would be able to afford it.
Well, she kind of changed her staffing to, to all libraries.
Oh, she did.
They have, like, a longer lunch, and then they have, like.
I think they're closed on Mondays, maybe.
That's what I was going to say, I think they, they're only open four days a week, or, no, they're open on Saturday.
Okay.
They did a survey, but they're not, they don't have the same hours of operation because of PERS.
So our ask would basically be to.
Improve, increase staffing.
Increase staffing and hours and everything. It would not be related to infrastructure or capital improvements. If we did do something with that, that would make sense.
So under the Corporation for National and Community Service, I was thinking about our school cafeteria in that one. Um, where are you at now?
You still in Title Two?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, that's just at the bottom of that one page, it's, uh.
It's two down from the library.
Yeah, it's Corp- Corporation for National Community Services.
Okay.
So under that one, it talks about being able to feed the kids through the schools. And, um, I'm just wondering if we could keep the school cafeteria open during the summer time to provide at least a sack lunch for the kids.
So.
Yeah, that's covered by the hospital right now.
Yeah, they have, and they just submitted their funding for that, um, and so they will have a summer lunch program. But the school also provide, what you're thinking, well, the school also provides breakfast to kids. So maybe they can do a breakfast program to supplement, and then the hospital can still do the lunch program, or?
Yeah.
Well, and I know I talked to Mrs. Warner last year, and the teachers were providing about forty-five sack lunches on Fridays out of their own money.
Oh, really?
So the kids would have something to eat over the weekend. And, um.
I haven't heard that this year, but that doesn't mean it's not happening.
I just didn't know if we wanted to plug in a number there.
Yeah.
Or, or a, a, a number to help the hospital expand their program through CHIP.
I don't know if you guys want to do it, I just want to be able to plug in a number there, so.
Yeah, because, I mean, you don't piggyback on the ones that are already have the infrastructure and everything else, but just increase their funding to expand their program, but they have a pretty good program in place for the summer lunch program and everything, but.
Should we put like twenty K down? Or not?
Sure, that buys a lot of food, fair amount.
I don't know, they had a hundred and, about a hundred and ten kids use the program just in Lakeview last summer.
Yeah, I don't know what the funding was.
And I don't know what the funding was in order to do it just over the summer.
So what do you think?
I think we should ask Arvin or Christine.
I got I got something to give. And we we gotta have a number today, so um.
Well, what about, I I I'm embarrassed to say this, but I don't know. Do they have some programs like this in the rest of the county that we need to think about supporting too?
Probably.
I know Interpart um was delivering meals from the school during the first part of COVID, but I don't know. What other programs they have or what we can support.
Um what I think is we need to come up with a number and then.
Okay, well. Let's come up thirty.
Okay.
Sounds good. And you know, contentious on maybe that changing once we circle back with our vendor or something like that, we can always, you know, I have no problem. Change that before the end of the day. My only other uh thing there I wrote down entitled to was the Community Health Center and Mental Health. Was that something that you were possibly gonna get? Did that ring a bell with any of you guys about need there? I was also thinking about our community center. Talks about one point four billion for older Americans Act programs.
And our um senior center was virtually closed.
Yeah, and they they need to get back open and and this would be a nice shot in the arm for them. To get some money, so.
What do you think there, Mr.? I mean, they virtually have them operated all year, so.
Yeah, so.
Sort of yearly budget.
I don't know.
It's over a hundred grand probably.
Their meal program? Their meal programs through triple A um. And they were still doing like curbside even when they were closed. Now they're doing some in-person dining even though. Think they have it socially distanced, but I I don't know what that part of their budget is. I can figure it out real quick. I can text her.
I think that we should put in a request there to try to get our senior center back up. That that fits this perfectly. Yeah.
Same catch, I guess so.
But dropping down into mental health, what do you guys think about that? Because that's really kind of open. Uh they're they're looking at making sure that we can provide treatment. And it's not that we're not providing treatment. I'm just wondering about, you know, in the future and, you know. Are the buildings that we have, the county does own that one building. Um over across from uh Pacific Crest. I don't know what condition that roof is in anymore, you know, things like that. Maintaining and being able to continue to provide services.
It's to increase under mental health that says a package to increase availability of treat.
To increase availability.
And so.
Well. Yeah. We've heard about the need for a second vehicle. Yeah. Uh we've heard about. You know, various miscellaneous needs and whatnot, I mean, we can put in for. For mobile crisis, things like that. We know uh an S U V is around fifty thousand. Uh it's certainly would be would it would be a nice shot in the arm for them if they.
Yeah.
Could get something like that for a vehicle to increase services.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
You wanna put fifty K K down on that one?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. I have three. Unless you guys had something more there.
Nope.
Okay, I had uh. Wrote down homelessness and housing solutions. And emergency housing vouchers. I need to read up on it again just to get my mind around where I have that. I did not put a number or an ID there.
Um which Jacob's still in here.
I know.
Provides.
So does Charlie. Charlie and Jacob do housing vouchers.
What did Charlie say this morning about that? How many?
Up for that project. They're looking at seventeen.
Seventy, that's what I thought too. Because if we can run it, the veterans, emergency ha- housing under the veterans. We can get them at least temporary places.
Well, if like you guys could divide it between the two pipelines that we have.
Through Jacob and Charlie.
And Minister of that way. Because if they're not a veteran, then it's hard to help them. Like we can increase their their access.
Does it say? What it's under assistance for homelessness. What they're putting out there.
You know, we read in uh Plymouth, I don't know if you guys read it, the Herald News that. They're purchasing a hotel over there or they're proposing to purchase a hotel for homelessness.
County is?
County is, and uh. Not positive whether that's a done deal or not, but uh. You know, that's something Plymouth County is doing. We certainly don't have very many options here in Lake County. But where you're going with the veteran thing, I think is a. You know, we probably should put our hand out if we can possibly help that program out.
That's. So what are you thinking on Charlie?
Fifteen?
Fifteen million? Sounds good.
You know, just monthly rent. You know, it's very expen- expensive for one person, so.
We have to be careful that we don't get into the area of competing with the private industry as well. But um to help them develop that project, you know, out there for veteran housing and things, yeah. Would you say fifty?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen, like that'd be way low.
I don't know.
Couple hundred grand?
To help with the project or the vouchers?
Oh, that that good question, yeah. Yeah, I think she was thinking of vouchers.
Because a hotel room, what it averages a hundred and eighteen dollars probably in Lakeview, I think with their tax. So.
Fifteen thousand a bill online.
How much?
Fifteen thousand for the vouchers. And are you guys also thinking about helping out with the project? Yeah, that that would be a separate.
Where would you be under the assistance for homelessness?
Yeah, I imagine that would be. I think so. How about a hundred K there? What do you think? Yeah.
Yeah.
So the other, the desert um Horizon Project, some of that is a loan. For um the permanent housing project.
Right.
I'm just saying like there's two housing projects that are.
What was that one that we wrote down thirty thousand for? We plugged in the number thirty grand.
Uh Corporation for National.
Okay.
And Community Service School and Hospital for the chip program or food.
Thirty K.
Yep.
All right, um. Yeah, let's just go with it. Okay, we have, because there are so many of these things. Yeah, we can't get too far down there. Anything else in title three?
Under the small business capital, is that still for it?
Yes.
Um I was thinking that we could do. Through this COVID.
Help small businesses uh recover from the pandemic and reemerge stronger than what we've done before. That's what we were thinking. Okay.
I was thinking of asking for a million bucks. Why not? Our five hundred thousand went like investors, but. I don't, you want a different number in there? Is this what, all of our small businesses were qualified?
Yep. Okay. I don't have a better number, so. Okay.
It's a nice round number, so. So under title four, um the funeral assistance. So I asked on our phone call today about the bill that. I was working on with uh Representative Owens. The indigenous bill and what's happened is is.
Indigent.
Indigenous, indigenous, yeah, thank you. Thanks for that clarification.
Native Americans.
Indigenous. Bill. Anyways, that bill died and it was to provide. Um five hundred dollars. Per funeral and so right now. Our own funeral facility only is gonna get twenty bucks for those. And so it's coming out of their own. Money. Yeah, and she spent over twenty five thousand last three years burying those people. And so my thought on that would be. You know, to ask for fifty grand and then we, for each person that passes away, that. She would have to cover herself the accounting paper.
Okay.
Out of that is my thought.
Are you guys good with that? That's appropriate.
Yep. It's a good one. And thank you for the clarification.
Sorry.
No.
I did not have anything else to top four, so go ahead.
So under the FEMA grant program. It's emergency managers, firefighters. Governmental and non-governmental organizations. Um I was wondering if we could get something for the wildland. Our wildland firefighter groups out of that.
RFPs?
The RFPs, yeah.
RFPs. We're doing pretty good. We could use some help on fuel. That's always a nightmare. And having.
So you wanna throw a number at me?
Yeah, um. Warner Valley and.
Well, how many do you have?
All of them, yeah, all of them. There's five in Lake County, it's sort of Lake County. Some of them were barely touched, you know. Yeah, but they all work together.
They work together.
Yeah, through the ops meeting and.
Twenty grand a piece? Hundred grand?
Sounds good to me. That was basically the number I was going for.
About split five ways.
For fuel consumption. Uh I don't think.
Well.
That'd be proportionate, but.
Yeah.
The, what do we call it, Summer Lake one?
Summer Lake, uh um High Desert.
High Desert and Warner Valley are the two lawyers providers, so they will go, well, we can sort that out.
They can sort that out even. So do you want?
They can sort it out, yeah.
So do you want to stick with the hundred grand?
I think that's appropriate, yeah. Okay, if we get less.
Under the information technology. I was thinking the fiber on that one. On the bottom of that page.
Okay, I had fiber falling. Yeah, fiber falls over under broadband.
Title seven.
Okay, title seven, yeah.
So I can scratch that then.
Okay. Is now, but while we're on cybersecurity, are there any issues here at the courthouse or anything that we have any issues in with the security?
I am go- I just authorized a new room called Ninja, but that's three thousand dollars. It's like, it's like encrypt it a little further, just in case there's some sort of cyber attack or they can't.
You're gonna do five thousand in there?
Those are only three thousand.
What about um what about a lot of the, just the phishing emails and different things like that? Are there any? Is there anything out there that can make the coverage of those costs or any software that we can use for protection?
So what what are the parameters? Like, is it something that I budgeted for?
Right.
Last time, if it was already budgeted for, we couldn't use it for that. Like, I don't know the rules.
It doesn't say that.
It doesn't. It just says, there's two billion to equip federal agencies. With modern technology and cybersecurity tools to effectively and securely deliver American public services.
So we're we're not a federal agency then?
No, we're not. I I don't. It also says these funds will protect vaccine development and distribution, so.
Okay, yeah, we're out on.
Yeah. We're out. Okay. We can find prints. Number five.
I have under the restaurants and bars. Put a million bucks.
But wouldn't that fall under the small business capital? Basically the same thing that we just did before.
Well, see, the the small business capital was re. Excuse me, going back to restaurant bars that are right.
Sure.
Our ones that we gave, they were on the top of the list and so all these other businesses did qualify.
Right.
Our restaurants and bars qualified, but they didn't. So I was thinking the small business one, all the ones that didn't qualify for any of that other stuff. Qualify under the small business. And then the restaurant bars would have their. How many, how many have we lost? Five, four?
Yeah, I mean, there's still. Still a couple of North Lake that, you know.
Hanging off by She Street. I don't know.
Well, there are a couple that that did close up there. They have reopened.
So they're specifically asking for restaurants and bars, so I just threw a number out there.
Yeah, that is.
We can drop it down.
Uh you had, you put in one million, but you originally put in about five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Do you think?
Especially for smaller restaurants, it says, so.
Yeah, let's.
Uh five hundred?
Okay.
Is that? I don't know why I changed it. Must have had some good reason.
Maybe you were thinking one million total for both the small business capital and the restaurants together.
I I didn't write down there why I was thinking it, so.
Correct. Hadn't thought. It was good at the time.
So the Shutter Venue Operators Grant Program. I was thinking of our fairgrounds because many of its venues were stopped. Many of its venues were stopped.
And I did put the numbers there. What are you thinking for a number?
Hundred K? What do you guys think?
I was somewhere between fifteen and a hundred, yeah.
That's not the only venue that got shut down though, you have like the Christmas Valley Music Festival, you have stuff up here at Warner Canyon, you have the Algea Theater.
So, so what do you suggest?
Um. When you, when you add it all up across the county, even, even like the.
Parks.
Paisley Players, the Playa, um, Port Rock. Music and the Landscape, or I would call it right there, but.
Right, and Parks and Rec and everything.
There are a lot of events and, and venues that were shut down over the course of the year, I think when you sit down and you add it all up, it's probably. Three hundred thousand, maybe, five hundred, yeah.
Let's go five hundred.
You can have the golf course. You can have like events at the golf course, then there's so many.
Yeah.
Events that got the Chamber of Commerce with everything they do and the events that got shut down there, there's just a.
Rodeo stuff.
Yeah, there is a, there was a lot, when you can, if you can consider them shuttered venues.
The title of it, it says shuttered venue operators grant program. And so I guess if it's. A, a venue operator.
Yeah, so those facilities that.
Air, steel, all those would apply.
Yeah.
Correct. Uh, next you have community navigator, technical assistance and administrative funding.
So I also had SCOE on that one.
Get five million plugged in for that.
Because it's, you also got the Small Business Administration. Who's operating on the She Street and we of course use climate, yeah. And so. We use SCOE up, we use our Small Business Administration. This one, let me see. So it's, I'll just read part of it, um. It's to assist community organizations, SBA resource partners. And community financial institutions with experiences working with minorities. Immigrants in rural communities to serve a community as a community navigator. To help connect small business owners in these communities. Um, through business levels, business license, federal, state, and local business assistance programs. And so what I was also thinking on that one is that would pay. For our SCOE person in Lakeview. And we can attach all of that, but that's just my thought. And that's why I had that big number there. And if you guys wanna add or subtract, that's why.
I don't have a better number. So it says the bill provides a hundred seventy-five million in new assistance, then down at the bottom it says also includes one point three two five billion to support SBA's mission. To administer the new grants and other relief programs.
So is that going straight to Small Business Association right off the top?
So I just wanna make sure.
Pretty much.
Yeah. So we're only chasing a hundred seventy-five million in that particular category? And we're asking for five of it, split thirty-six ways.
That's just. I think that's the whole federal.
That is the whole federal. We're only talking seven hundred. I, I probably cut it down. Do you think two?
Two point five?
Yeah.
Okay.
For what?
The community navigator. On the Economic Development Administration funding, I had the fairgrounds, Title Two in Paisley. And I didn't have a number.
Title six.
I mean, this is our Parks and Rec money, this is, uh. Travel, tourism. You know, our Parks and Rec.
This could be a big number too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright. I don't know. Again, two point five to five. I don't know.
It'd be nice if we could get. Just thinking, we kind of, we kind of talked about the shuttered venues and operator and everything else, and we're, we're looking at five hundred thousand for that. And this is a big one, I mean, but. I'm thinking about projects, what actually spend it on. Well, I mean, I'm not sure I see two point five million or five million.
Right.
I'm. It's an awful lot, especially being that they only have seven hundred fifty million for the travel tours and outdoor recreation sectors. I mean, we'll be better off asking for a more realistic number than how we could even. What do you think?
A million bucks?
Yeah, it's, it's more realistic that we would be able to receive something.
Spend a million bucks.
We wanna, we wanna. Right, right.
Easy.
We wanna maximize our opportunity going forward, we could potentially be losing to prison here.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there's a lot of things that we just, that are not on the radar yet, we don't know what's coming down the track. So, I mean, some of these are really good, we might not get all of them, we might get a couple. But we wanna maximize that opportunity going forward to, they, we did get approved for any, it gives us these extra pots of money to work with as we.
It'd be nice to have, it'd be nice to have at least a million bucks in our rec moment. Development.
Yeah.
I could go quickly.
Just because this category itself is so general, I, I like the idea of keeping it big.
I, I don't think. I don't think two and a half million is.
Just thinking, I, I'm not really thinking of. Like, projects that we could spend that on, right, they're not on the top of my head, but I don't have rejection to it. Two point five to ten million?
Well, if you talk about pulling, uh, let's just use the idea of pulling, uh, natural gas.
There you go.
The rest of town.
That's good.
Hey, that's a ten million dollar project.
I mean, so we're just, we're just a tenth of what it costs, uh. You know, but that would be an economic development. My gosh. Improving the water system, expanding our water program, you know.
That's the next category though, air quality.
Yeah, so. Okay, well.
Plug in a million, three million?
Point five?
It's supposed to be.
We're haggling now, so.
One point five.
Okay, alright.
Alright.
You know, concern here is, uh, just a little write-up with each one of these, you know, it's gonna be required.
Cool. Yeah.
You know, cause I don't know that we can just put a, a, a price without a little bit of an idea behind what it is. Cause every county is different, so. We could, we could put natural gas as a tickler here, or we could put, what else did we talk about?
You have your town, your, your towns. You know, the towns themselves, uh, different tourism and economic development programs, I mean, Paisley. Paisley is really. They struggle to do anything because they don't have capital.
Right.
And to, to put a few hundred thousand dollars into their. Program and let their city council. Figure out what would be best for their town to improve.
Right. Go a long way.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Correct. Okay, so here. This funding will also help EDA fulfill its role as a lead agency under National Disaster Response Framework to assist communities with economic recovery. Following a disaster, including the current health pandemic. And, and I was just kind of reading through economic debu, development and rebuilding local economies. Uh, communities and recreation, I'm wondering if maybe this is a good opportunity to throw in the water district infrastructure for Christmas Valley.
I had that one under, I guess.
I like that idea because the, um, grant we're working on. Through HUD is one point five million in, or two point five, and the whole project is estimated at five. So if we could get two point five more million dollars, they're still paying a bond off.
I, I just answered my question.
That's why I think I have that at such a high mark, because I think we talked about that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I talked to Eric that they're still paying off their bond from the last repair thing, and their. People are shutting their water off up there because they can't afford it and they're going, having to steal it, so if she has to figure out this other two point five, it's gonna.
See, you had the five million under the community navigator, but we didn't have a number for this one on the economic development.
I was under what?
You had the five million plugged into community navigator. Uh, or, yeah, the one before back in Title Five, but we didn't have a number for economic development, but that makes sense.
I wonder if I had the, yeah.
I didn't write on here. Okay, with that in mind, maybe we should increase that number.
Yeah, because.
Because we've got something to talk about now.
You had it, you had.
Then we've got something, we can, we can fill that.
Not only Christmas Valley's water, Paisley's water.
Paisley's water, Lakeview's water.
And so, I think Lakeview's water was nine million. And so. Yeah, let's, let's throw that out and use their water on each community.
Yeah.
As the selling point. What do you think?
Yeah.
So what do you wanna boost it to?
Five. I.
You're over that one.
Yeah, I, I think five, because if we go too high, we have to remember there's only seven hundred fifty million there.
Yeah.
It's kind of sitting there, but then they, um, I mean, the previous one provided about five billion. But this is, this is not as big of a number as the last care town. So, I'll, I'll just go five mil.
Good.
And this is for the economic development.
Right.
Administration.
Right. Aid to communities and rebuilding local economies and, uh.
You've got the chamber.
Yeah, you know, honestly, if our person's gonna be closed, we may need to do a lot of rebuilding our local economy. So, makes sense.
Okay.
So under air quality and monitoring, I had, um, Paisley in Lakeview. I didn't have a number on that one.
Um, you know, again, you come back to the wood stoves thing, you know, we're natural gas, if there's an opportunity there. The big thing that hits us, you know, aside from wildfire, you know, during that time of the year is the wood stoves during the winter. So.
At summertime, you know, one of the things being talked about is providing HEPA filters.
Yeah.
Basically clean air, etcetera, all filter system.
So how about fifty thousand there?
I think that's fair.
I'm split up between the two communities. Huh?
Good, yeah, unless you want, unless you.
That's, that's conservative.
Yeah, yeah, unless you wanna go ahead and build the natural gas line going all the way to the sawmill. Get us all the way into town through, along our railroad.
I'm looking, uh. Since fifty million of this funding is targeted to low-income communities, communities of color, which are definitely more likely to live in poor air quality.
We do this out looking here.
That, I mean, we, we have, we've talked about it for years, getting that all the way to the sawmill gets it into town, makes it a lot easier for us to find some provider. Willing to take on the project of, you know, getting into the individual homes, because at that point it goes all the way through the middle of town along our rail. And it gives the other businesses on the north end of town some opportunity.
We better put a big number there.
I know, I'm thinking.
That's a ten million dollar project.
So. Was it full ten million just to get the line to Lakeview? Or was it ten million with other stuff, because they got it.
The line's at Red Rock now.
It's at Red Rock now, which is not very far out of town.
Yeah, what's running here, we, we just own capacity. How does that work?
We don't have a six-inch capacity from Red Rock to.
Yeah, and so you have to have a provider.
Yeah.
And a provider hasn't been on Lakeview because of the, you know, we have twenty-three hundred residents. Uh, which is a lot less actual. Standards going to households, but. Uh, if we can provide the line to get across town. It also gives our businesses more opportunity and to attract more businesses.
So that, that's, that would be my question, is that ten million? To get the whole project up and running, or is that just to get the line through town?
You know, maybe we're talking five million. You know, some type of match program, somebody.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Good with that.
So is that one you wanna? Which one was that?
You know, air falls in line with a lot of the, yeah, air quality falls in line with the, you know, we have a lot of things and places we can go with the description on that. Okay. And there's several different places.
We've flirted with monetainment, uh, you know, on wood stove and.
Windows.
Winter, winter time, things like that, natural gas would go that tremendously.
Yeah, and.
Improve people's lives, breathing, etcetera.
But we have an inversion here, I mean, Lakeview always gets bad and.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't have anything on the fish mom iPhone. It was pretty specific.
I don't wear any zoonotic diseases.
I'm, and then on Title.
Sounds Scottish. Um.
Title seven would be broad.
That is the broad, yeah.
So.
And of course I had fiber to Lakeview to Christmas Valley. Let me check my email here.
From Paisley to CD.
Yeah.
Cause there is, there is fiber from Paisley. So maybe Barry.
That would stop the redundant fee, I think he said that was a half million bucks. Add it on to what they're already paying, but. I think that's. I don't see how they could do it for.
Yes, yeah, so, uh. Barry, you wanna give us an update on?
I have none.
Uh, the Zayo conversation, I was just curious what he was saying.
So I had a quick Zoom meeting before we start at nine thirty with Zayo, acronym Z A Y O. Uh, who is working on getting a, uh. Uh, who is working on getting a, uh, fiber optic line going down Highway thirty-one. Uh, down into California. And they are still working on consultation and, uh, doing cultural resource reports, et cetera. I asked them, you know, they, they kind of compared it, um, I asked them about competition and whatnot, they said, you know, this is. If you think of it like building a freeway, um, and other companies wanna come in, they just wanna build a highway off the freeway. So they're really not competition. We have a gentleman up in Christmas Valley who has N S C grant.
Yeah.
Uh, he's not really competition with them, but he would like to use their freeway so that he can build a highway, so to speak.
Yeah, but they only let him break the line so many times, and that's.
They have plenty of fiber to sell or to provide.
Yeah, but they can only sell it from those points in which they break the line open. And that was.
But I think they can play with that, and, and they have quite a capacity. When they do this, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, I asked them, what are we talking about to get from Christmas Valley to Paisley on this project, you know, money-wise? And they didn't wanna give me a number, but they're gonna give me a number by now. So, uh, you know.
I think ten, we would get this, say a million.
Yeah, and it may be five hundred thousand. It may be something less, but right now, let's write down a million dollars.
Okay.
I think it could be less later on, but again, we, we fit this need, we're trying to provide broadband through K through twelve students in remote areas. Uh, where they don't currently have good internet other than cell phone, right?
Right.
Right.
And, you know, wireless is still an option that we need to kind of continue to look at that too. By getting another, uh, tower somewhere.
I was thinking, we could get, if there's extra, we could put a microwave tower somewhere and broadcast to an area.
There, there was a whole proposal that we had in place that we just got hung up on as far as a NEPA process to get a footprint in Priest on Dead Indian. And, uh, and it has line of sight to the top of Paisley School to Christmas Valley. And the idea was to beam five to ten gigabytes per second up to the top of Dead Indian and beam it back and forth, and it would solve the connectivity issue. The issue we're gonna run into with Z A O is the same issue that we ran into all those meetings last year and the year before. Where they only break out so many times, so if they're broken out Silver Lake and then they break out near Paisley. Um, which is where they have those buildings right now, they won't break the line again. Uh, so we have to lay our line.
Well, they go.
From Silver Lake. Um, to Christmas Valley, which is a possibility, or we lay it from Paisley and go over the pass, that might be a potential, that way we wouldn't have to go over the pass. We, we could just lay our, we, we're talking about laying an additional line, we, we buy it from them in Silver Lake. And then we run it through the town, we break it out however many times we want and sell to the community, because they won't break it out a second time. Because that, it's the way they, they boost, if it hits the one tower and it boosts again to the next, and then it boosts again to the next. But if they, they start breaking it too much, it lowers the capacity and they're, they've got buyers down in California and the south that want a certain speed. And so they have to promise them that speed. So, that's. If we could lay line over the pass, that'd be great, I'm not sure why, you know, I mean, I wanna get it to Summer Lake, and so that's the idea. You know, because I live there and I know the community needs it, we're just completely Benghazi strip of Lake County. And, uh, the idea of buying it from Paisley site, running it along that rim, and then going back over the pass. We can get it to those other communities once it's over there and into Christmas Valley and all the way around. Now you have a thought on your mind, you're thinking.
We're just trying to get the project to, you're off the ground, yeah.
I know, but.
I don't have the answer for you, you're, you're more into it than I, uh, I just learned about it yesterday.
No, I know, I know, I know, I, I'm throwing it out there because, you know, they, they, they use that terminology when we've talked to them about, it's a highway. Uh, you know, a freeway, and so, you know, well, the problem is that you're, you're on and off ramps for only at the designated points in which they dictate to you. Because it's. Like the whole thing with the hospital in order, they, their, their other station is down here south of town, it's outside of the town. So in order to get the connectivity with Z A O, just for our hospital, was an additional line from that site to the hospital.
But if you get this freeway built though, we could.
I mean, the freeway is great, but it's just.
It provides your depth of.
But not, uh, only if we can tap into it.
I didn't hear anything that said we couldn't.
No, no, they, they told us that they've got lots to sell, like, it's exactly what they told you, it's just a matter of logistics of building our own fiber. Or having a company that's able to build fiber to one of their points.
Okay, well, I think they're gonna give us a number by noon, and I think it meets the CARES Act. Piece there, and it helps us one way or another, correctly or indirectly, it's gonna help, I believe.
So do we want, so we still want one million, do we wanna go higher, lower? I'm just, I, I was throwing out some logistics of how far we may end up having to go in order to tap into their freeway. Um, you know, for the north end and everywhere else, because.
I asked them to provide us a paragraph of what, of what this would provide and to give us a dollar figure. And well, we should have that by noon, which is.
So we'll, we'll stick with a million until we get that.
Yeah.
So we can move on.
Oh, yes, alright, we've got too far.
So on the airports, I put two million dollars, the reason there is to extend our runway and the possibility of putting in a couple new hangars. There's way less on hangars, um, if we can extend our runway, we can get bigger aircraft in it, and so. That's what I threw out there.
So I was asking Dave about this this morning, and he was saying a hundred and fifty would build them a, a, a new T hangar. That would give them space for eight new aircraft, so a hundred and fifty, pretty small low hanging fruit, honestly, to get another hangar. Especially if Tom is turning people away every week for space.
Well, what I'm thinking is is two hundred hangars and extended room.
Yeah, okay, but. How, so if we were to talk two new hangars, we're talking three hundred thousand, extend the runway, what are we talking about, a match or? You know, are we looking at contribution to that, a couple hundred thousand, or would it be more? Numbers aren't in my head, so.
Forgot the exact amount, but would it cost us? It's okay, though.
That number's high.
Yeah.
That's why I think you're at two million. Are you thinking we should come in with a lower number?
No, I was just, I, well, what are we dealing with here, they don't even give us the number here, yeah. This is one of the ones that didn't give us numbers, so what was actually allocated towards airports, um.
I mean, if we got two hundred thousand, I'd be happy, it's just kite, but, high's a kite, but.
Well, three hundred thousand builds us two hangars, easy.
The key sentence here says airport relief is also designed to help small airport, uh, concessionaires, meaning which are disadvantaged business owners.
Ding.
That's us.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a crazy amount.
Maybe, or. I guess the strategy we could have, let's go for the hangars but not extend the runway. And then we're putting in for a lower amount and maybe it'll be a hit.
So what if we wanted Airlink or Airlight to come in and build a big hangar? For their size of aircraft with places where they can debunk. And, you know, I'm looking out at a future, and if you want a nice company, aircraft related company to move in. You have to have the facility in place, and so.
Three hundred thousand is nothing.
No.
I know, and then those two hangars.
And so that's why I'm sticking with it.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, I'm not in budget with this.
You're on two million?
Yeah, three million.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, okay, alright, fine, that's what I wanted to know.
My offer too.
I don't care, my offer.
Let's put it down.
Two million.
I know I didn't have anything else.
Uh, Title Seven. I wrote airport down too.
Yeah, that was like number four for me. Just because.
So, on the Committee for Veterans Affairs, I put five hundred thousand, but part of that included the housing. Of veterans.
On Title Eight?
Pardon me?
On Title Eight?
Yeah. And so, I'm fine if you wanna try to change that one.
Should we move that other?
I also thought of, well, of an employee to hold, Charlie.
Honest. So, I mean, as far as more than just the part-time funding that we have right now, yeah.
But this is one time, like, that's dangers.
Yes, yeah.
Doesn't mean it can't be a known time that they would help, but we are teams.
Like, after a certain date. Right, you go to full-time for this year because of certain projects or whatever else, you know, and you could.
But I, I'm fine with whatever you guys wanna deal on.
What was the five hundred K for, just?
Part of, part of it was housing, part of it was doing different programs, and then I was thinking of the employee, but. If you guys wanna change it, I'm fine with it.
You got a hundred thousand already in the homeless assistance, and then a hundred, another hundred, another five hundred K for the veterans housing, so. Those numbers are a lot different.
Yeah.
To, you know, and the thing is, is that homeless assistance, the one that's under there, when we put in this proposal, we can write down what our proposal is. And we can just say simply that it is in line with not only Title Eight, but also Title Such and Such.
Yeah. So if you guys want a different one there.
Just leave, just leave her at five hundred. I think we can state that.
Do you wanna ch- go back and change the homeless assistance thing and just kind of, you know?
I think we should ask for both.
Yeah.
And not, not combine them, but.
Well, it has to do with job creation too. That's getting jobs again. I don't know, you think, you think that's too much to ask?
I think it's an awful lot, it, it's a lot different than the hundred thousand that we thought was sufficient, uh, uh, for the homeless assistance. I, I, I don't know. Yeah.
Two fifty, two hundred? Run out of room.
Right. Can I relate?
Bye.
I brought a whole notepad, I think.
Alright, so this is where I had. Uh, on the state, state and local fiscal aid. Probably still under Title.
No, we're fine.
That's where I had the Christmas Valley Water Project in the west. Um, town of Lakeview, town of Paisley, and Art County. So.
Okay.
Can I make that like that better here?
Yeah.
The water project's better here.
It does fit a little bit better.
So maybe we need. Maybe we need to, where did we have it prior?
That was, um, yeah, under Title Six.
Um, leave, I think we need to leave that number the same, under the economic development. But I think we should make this number big and pay for our Paisley, Christmas Valley, and Lakeview Water Projects.
And central infrastructure projects.
And also, I'm wondering if we should throw a program in on this one.
Well, that's the two.
Well, it's infrastructure.
Tourism, travel, hospitality, infrastructure, most of it.
And so if we, if we make this one a big ask, we include Christmas Valley, Paisley, and Lakeview Water. Uh, issues, and then the county's railroad. Because we need this to keep our businesses, you know. I think we need to swing for the fence on this one.
I say five million, or are you thinking higher? No, you would have to be higher if you're talking the water infrastructure and the railroad.
Well, as Eric is saying.
You're talking at two point nine, so that covers the three million that you have down here, plus you're talking the water town.
So like, Erica said, what, it was ten million dollars to fix the whole Christmas Valley?
Five.
Five?
Lakeview.
Lakeview's ten.
Lakeview was ten, and so, then Paisley, I'm, I'm assuming that's gonna be a couple million.
So we're talking twenty.
I mean, and even if we went twenty, we would spend it all, yeah. And so I don't think that's a crazy ask. And if any of them, we got money from any of them, this is where I want money. But this would be my main, okay, number one, I think.
So Ian was going to clarify, we could use federal match or federal grant. So, I'll circle back with her to make sure it qualifies, cause I haven't talked to her since I left.
Well, but if it doesn't, we still can apply it to our infrastructure.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so, we can pay for materials outright out of this, where we wouldn't spend the money out of that, you see what I'm saying?
Right.
Okay.
For, use it for materials and stuff, that's where I was going with it, so what do you guys think on that number?
Well, we're seventeen and a half railroad, another five hundred thousand, two hundred eighteen.
Five.
Just with the three water projects and the railroad, what else did we talk about?
That was all I think I had.
We're at eighteen right now. So.
How much did you add for the room?
Five hundred thousand, isn't that all that's needed?
No, 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 five hundred thousand is our cash match that we are already obligated to pay, but I think our longer number was two point nine.
Two point nine, sorry, I don't know why I would say two point.
Let's just say three.
What did you say?
I don't know why I would say two point.
So we're.
I've never heard you say two point six. Just. Yeah, flip it upside down.
We're at twenty, twenty million.
I don't think that's crazy.
Okay.
You guys good with that?
I'm good with twenty million, yeah. I think, I don't think it's a realistic ask for the things that we're intending to do.
Yeah.
I think that's a very real number.
Yeah, for Paisley and these values, like.
Not with these values, we can get that. I think you're right as far as making this our number one, because you see the, uh, the sentence here, it says the Congressional Budget Office has said that the number one best. Quote, bang for the buck of all the money Congress has passed so far is aid to state local governments. So.
Hint, hint, and it's specific to local governments as well, I mean, there's, it's not, this isn't one of the ones that are kind of on the cusp that we're asking on behalf of another agency. So.
Okay. Now, remember, Oregon only has seven hundred and eighty. But. You can't get it if you don't ask for it.
No.
So.
And if, if we got a dollar, that's a dollar more than we're actually.
Put forward.
Before, that we had before, so.
Got, got me, okay, did you guys have anything else?
I did not.
I do. So what about this paid sick leave credit, I think it was really.
You're gonna be coughing.
Oh, no, you know, I didn't have to take it, but I know for some. Oh, no, you know, I didn't have to take it, but I know for some employees who are low on their sick time and they had to take ten days off. It was really nice for them, like we used it for like three employees, but if we could have some funds available for that program again. I think that'd be super nice.
What title is that under for me?
That's still.
Title one.
Title nine.
It is Title One, sorry, excuse me.
Uh-huh.
Two D. Oh. I'm a little wrong, got it.
Yeah, I think if if you know, we could have. I I I don't know, I could ask J like what we spent last time, it was like thirty thousand or something.
Well. Yeah.
Catching fifty.
But I don't even think it was that much.
Honestly, we we have, we have a situation right now where, you know, there is at least one or two employees that could really use. That as an asset, so I think we could do that.
But you know, just if they had to take time off for coronavirus, like we made them stay home and they could work remotely. It would be nice to have that program again, that's what I was kinda thinking.
About fifty thousand?
I was.
Are we talking county employees only?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be cool if we could do it for other employees.
I was thinking about public mental health.
But they're under, they're impossible, but it doesn't fall under that.
Yeah.
Okay, so is fifty two conservative?
I would say that might be high even if we're just doing it for our employees, just for coronavirus sick leave.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Or you just said thirty?
Thirty, twenty, I don't know.
I'm gonna go split the difference twenty five.
Okay.
Twenty five. Okay. Title ten talks about committee for foreign relations and Title eleven, committee for money and affairs.
So I, I am on a big committee for foreign relations and I am not seeing anything that I, that fits for us.
I don't know, but this is different.
Uh not pertaining to Lake County.
U A is not knocking down the door. Alright. Okay. Good.
I believe so, we can sit in here first.
So as far as the write-ups, are we? Gonna give these out or are we gonna, are we gonna do this? I have to drive out of town in about an hour and a half.
Yeah. Head for burn, um.
I can do some.
Do you have good decent notes?
I have okay notes and I can, um, I can get these typed up right quick and then. I can send them to you guys and we can expand that.
Yeah, I would make, you know, just for top priority sake, I would, you know, of course make number nine our number one. That, um.
State and local fiscal aid?
Yeah, state and, state and local aid would be number one. And then I would go back and I would take out Title Seven and making broadband, uh one million secondary.
Hundred two?
Yeah.
I should have a number for that.
Fifty more.
And uh economic development would be another one, um under number six. Uh but, you know.
Or do you guys wanna divide these and write them, like I don't wanna step on any of those too, I'm saying.
Yeah, right, um, I can write up one for the R F P A.
Okay.
I don't know if we should put them, actually say what our number of importance is.
But we don't have to, no, 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 not when we submit, no, we don't have to do that, but this is a priority for making sure that we. Melanie's got some really good notes from our discussion and stuff, but I was.
Yeah, I'm good with it, if you need, like James is our own R F P A already. And so having him do that one would be fine. Um, Barry, you were working on the schools one, right?
Yeah, I, I think we oughta. Probably oughta just take on the whole title.
Yeah.
Um, we need to do Title Two.
Uh, sure, does that including the chip and food share and everything?
It looks like, uh. Yeah, it does, looks good, so there's one, two. Senior Center I wrote down and I did put a dollar amount.
Yeah, I would.
We didn't put on anything on the seniors underneath.
I figured I could follow up on the food share and chip and everything, Arvind is at town, he's on vacation right now.
So the food share I had sixty thousand.
So I can do Title Two, that would all. I can do that and I can do Title Seven, how about I'll commit to that?
Okay.
I haven't heard from any three, um, seniors there.
I just heard from Christie at the hospital, she hasn't been able to contact Charlie. And she said she put at least a million.
For which one?
Rural health.
For rural health.
Which is which title again? Oh, Title One.
We had, we had a hundred, two hundred thousand.
She said a million?
Yeah.
Earl up here one minute. I'm not as comfortable writing on that one.
You had some notes on that mark and of course, you know, Christie, so. Maybe you could, if you wanted to kind of tackle that.
You guys wanna take on a couple titles?
Yeah, I'm kinda going through down here, um. Like I said, I'll take the R F P A.
You'll do Title Four?
Yeah, I can do Title Four. And then, uh. Shutter, I was thinking Title Five.
Okay, so, sorry, I was texting back and forth with Christie opposite, so, um, who's got Title One?
I could take.
Anyone yet?
No, you, I already promised.
I did.
I don't know.
I'm fine, I just put.
We split us four ways.
Yeah.
It'll make it easier.
I can shoulder some of it.
Yeah, and we each work with.
How about you take Title One and Title Nine, Mark?
Okay. Let me, uh, can we go through them by order and then I'll just mark people's initials?
Yep, so Title One.
I got Title One, who's got Title Two?
Barry.
B S?
Yeah.
And then I'll write it on this one. Who's got Title Three?
Melanie.
No?
Sure.
That's got, that's got the chip.
What's it worth? Okay.
And uh library and stuff in it as well.
And just go with it.
Oh, no, that, no, that's actually still in two.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Who has two, no?
I have two.
Barry's got two.
Melanie has three, James has four and five.
Yeah.
We need somebody for Title Six and Title Eight.
I can do six.
Okay.
Tell you which one's white.
Uh, six is economic development and air quality.
Okay, I can do that.
And Title Eight, housing.
Who's got?
The programs.
Sorry, guys. So four is homeland security, that's James's.
Yep. Which one?
A M.
Oh, yay.
Who's got five, James got five also?
Yep.
And then six is.
No. And then.
Seven, seven is Barry.
Yeah, fiber, broadband, airport.
So you have the airport one too, isn't it?
Yeah. And we don't have anybody for the vets for Title Eight.
Yeah.
I can work with that.
You wanna do that one? So you got one, eight and nine, Mark?
I can help out on six. So Melanie can maybe help on either the air quality or economic development, we can work on that one together.
Okay.
And then I'll look like we need one for ten. Well.
I think we're talking about a paragraph at the most. Uh.
Yeah.
Just a brief description, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Proposal description, define problem and proposed solution. And estimated cost, says ranges are okay, please include any necessary contents.
Yeah.
Might not be a lot of content here. Okay, you guys have enough notes?
I think so.
We may have to work back and forth if it gets done.
Yeah.
And I think we'll get a few phone calls between now and, when do you wanna have our deadline hour?
Well, he's on the road.
Yeah.
I need to get started right away on this.
Yeah.
When are you leaving?
In an hour and a half, hour and fifteen minutes. So.
One.
But when do, when are we gonna send it out?
Send it to Andy?
By the end of today.
By the end of today.
And by the end of today, at the very latest tomorrow, Andrea didn't seem like it was, she, they just have to have their stuff in by Friday. So I mean, like, I talked to her on the phone, she said that they needed to have it in by then, that was their deadline.
So I have one, eight, nine, correct?
One, eight, nine.
So.
I was actually anticipating tomorrow would be our meeting, when I talked to her, so.
Let's let's try to get it by the ship today.
That would be ideal.
I think we can all work on it together.
We can get a good amount of this, we can balance.
Alright.
Come in turn. Big.
Yeah, um, we'll go ahead and adjourn at eleven fifteen.